Gentlemen, I would like to invite, uh, to, uh, welcome you to our study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April 1st, 2019. Thank you for being here. Uh, we will start off with, uh, citizens' right to speak. Um, our first speaker is Vivian Voss. If you'd like to come to the podium and adjust the microphone, and they tell me to speak into the microphone because we want to capture all of your comments.
Good evening, Vivian Voss, six nine two zero West Forty-seventh Place. Well, there's not very many of us citizens here tonight, so I hope April Fools didn't scare everybody off, and that what we're doing here tonight is serious, right? No jokes. I did notice that RTD announced today about the G-line, so, uh, things still roll along seriously, even though it's April Fool's Day. I also wanted to take a minute and comment on the gala that I was privileged to attend, the fifty-year gala celebration, that it was on a stormy, wintry night a couple of weeks ago. I thought the city outdid themselves, was way more than anything I expected. The decor was wonderful, the food, the presentation, the company, and everybody looking so grand. It was, was really a joy to attend that. Now, my three minutes on the agenda. I'm objecting to the change on the two E vote by the citizens for the one point two million roughly of a private partnership study donation. It seems to me that if there's a study session on this subject, it seems to me that if you needed to draw the city attorney in to make a decision on this, that that ought to tell you right there, this is not the thing to do. To, do not abuse the two E vote by the citizens, and I would suggest that if you want some money to make up for this gap or this private partnership allotment, that you could use the money you wanted to use at the green on the ridge, whatever we're calling that, because I feel that's totally unnecessary. It's not a need, it's a want. You've got the money there, use it on the gap you have at the, um, tracks, and, uh, there's just no reason to spend money on any else, anybody else's property if it's not owned by the city of Wheat Ridge. Instead, Jeffco Schools owns it, and they can have it, have the improvement, and then we walk away with nothing other than the ability to use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that's the only person I had signed up to speak today, but if anyone else is here who would like to speak at public citizens' right to speak on any item on the agenda tonight, you may come forward and speak now. And I don't see anyone, so we will conclude our citizen right to speak and go to, uh, agenda item number one. This is the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, an overall, uh, update and review and approval of the two E funding allocated for that project. So, Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, excited to give you an update, um, on this project. Um, we have Ken Johnstone here, Community Development Director Steve Art here. Um, we've got a lot of people here. Lauren Mikulak, Mark Westberg, and we do have a guest, Merrily Utter with City Venture, um, who is working with the city on this project also, and, um, I'll just let Ken, uh, kick it off.
Thank you, Patrick. Well, uh, I think we've got a pretty thorough update for you. Uh, we were last in front of you, uh, on January seventh of this year, and you guys gave us, uh, some good direction on, on some projects, but, uh, we've got some new faces on council. Uh, we had some questions that council posed at that last meeting that we can now answer, uh, and so looking to just get, uh, your direction once again to keep moving forward with the two E projects, uh, and just in general implementing the vision for the Ward TOD area. The fact that it's April Fool's Day was not lost on us either, but, um, Ms. Voss appears to have taken our punchline. Uh, the, the no foolin' email from RTD, so a little April Fools' hewer, but, uh, exciting, right? So, uh, apropos that we're in front of you tonight as well, we're actually, uh, based on some comments that we had with RTD staff, we're hoping that we have good news in time for this meeting, so, uh, it's, it's great news. Uh, so our outline for today, uh, we're going to kick it off, uh, here in a moment with an update from Merrily Utter. Uh, she's our, uh, developer's kind of rep out in the community, trying to, uh, gin up developer interest in the area and really be an extension of city staff. Uh, we're going to briefly go over the January seventh meeting, that shouldn't take but a few minutes. Uh, of course, go over the two E project list, it hasn't changed a whole, uh, bunch from the January seventh update, but a few things have been refined, uh, and some, some numbers have been refined. Uh, we do want to talk about that, uh, possibility for a public-private partnership for the tracks multifamily, uh, development. Uh, and we want to spend a fair amount of time, uh, presenting the plans for the pedestrian bridge in Linear Park. Uh, we do have fifty percent designs for that and some great, uh, images, and then, of course, as always, next steps. So what do we hope to get, uh, out of tonight? Uh, again, confirmation that we're working on the right, uh, use of the two E funds for the project list. Uh, we think we are, and it hasn't, again, changed much from, uh, the January seventh meeting, but we'll go over that. Uh, discussion and then ultimately direction on, on public funding for the tracks project. Uh, there was preliminary direction at that January seventh meeting, but we want to, uh, have a discussion and, and firm that up tonight. Um, and then, uh, if there's concurrence on kind of the conceptual designs that we have for the Linear Park and Pedestrian Bridge, uh, which was specifically part of the ballot language, uh, we'd like to get direction to work on negotiating contracts, uh, to proceed with, uh, design and right-of-way acquisitions, and we can give you an update on the discussions that we've had with the affected property owners later in the meeting. And with that, uh, for now, I'll turn it over to Merrily.
Merrily, you can sit too, if you're more comfortable. You okay up there?
Yeah, no, this is fine. Well, do you prefer me down there?
No, wherever you want to go.
Okay. I've got my prompts here, so I can play with it. So, good evening, it's nice to meet you. Um, I'm Merrily Utter, and I'm delighted to be working with Wheat Ridge. I've been working with you for about six months, and my role is really development strategy around transit-oriented development. My background is lots of different hats in the real estate world, including developer, banker, I worked for the city of Denver, I started the TOD department for RTD decades ago, um, and worked for the Urban Land Institute nationally and around the world. Um, so my goal really was to help Wheat Ridge determine, how do you implement this transit-oriented development? You had a good master plan to start with, that gives you big ideas, but how do you actually make things happen? How do you really bring the private sector to the table? Um, so to approach that, we work with property owners, meet with key property owners, business owners in the area, real estate developers, key stakeholders on the business and real estate side, and get their points of view and see where there's opportunities, really identify those opportunities. We had a meeting with the outdoor rec owners, which was really helpful to understand what those businesses need, because we obviously want to build that business base. Um, and so I thought I'd just go over a few of the key findings and the strategic recommendations that we have for you at this point. First of all, just a quick background on TOD. Main thing to understand is it takes a long time, much longer than you want or you think it should, but it does. And it never really starts until the train starts running. So all the work you've done now really gives you a head start, and I commend you on that. But, once the train is running, then people start to take it seriously, and you'll start seeing people think about their property differently, their businesses differently, developers and capital sources will be much more interested in, in coming into the area. What you're trying to get is a distinctive, walkable, special place. You want this to be a two-way train. You want people to come to Wheat Ridge as much as go to Denver on it. So it has to be a destination, it has to have a special definition. People have to be able to have a name for it and say, "I'm going to" Ward Station, or whatever the sexy name is. It needs to be green, and clean, and beautiful, and walkable, and interesting. So those are really the things that we work on figuring out, how do you get that? Um, the mix of uses and, and the, the density and the walkability are key elements that you should be thinking about in terms of the real estate development. And there are always public-private partnerships. The role of the public sector is to provide the vision for what they want that community to be like, to build the infrastructure, um, to, uh, put in the zoning, sometimes provide incentives. The private sector then will bring the equity, they'll bring the expertise, and they'll actually build out what you want to see. Well, Ward Road Station is pretty challenging, you guys know that already. You know, it's, it's, the access is difficult, the visibility is difficult, it's hard to find it if you don't know where you're going. The pedestrianism is pretty weak in there, the uses are, you know, kind of a mix. There's too much of some stuff and not enough of another stuff, so that needs a little curating over time. On the other hand, there's also some really good gems in that area to build on, and certainly the business base is, is really good, and the, the ponds are good, there's, uh, access from the freeways and the roadways when you know where you're going. There's a surrounding residential area, uh, that will be growing over time, and that can feed into the area. So there's stuff to build on too. Um, we liked the base camp concept and your master plan concept, we think you did a good job on. And master plans always change over time, so you look, you look at them for the big ideas, and the master plan spells out the infrastructure, and we like the infrastructure backbone that it provides. Um, let's see. So here's a diagram we did to show you kind of how we look at that infrastructure. Uh, we, we really like the idea that you're putting in the bridge, that you're doing the pedestrian connection along, uh, Ridge Road there and Fifty-second, that you've got that linear park. We'd like to, we'd like to add a couple of points in there. One is the entry point at Ward Road and Ridge Road. That's a really important corner for people to come in and find the station, and it kind of defines that district. You know, uh, Ward Road is just so busy and so much visual pollution along there as you're zipping along. Having something special that says, "This is the entry," is really hel, really important, and I encourage you to think about doing something special there. Similarly, we'd like you to think about adding at the base of the linear park, what we're calling a pond park, a small park, but something to anchor that linear park, so that on one end, you go from the station, you cross the bridge, there's linear park, and then you arrive at that pond park. We think that's a really important element to add. We also would like to encourage you to think about, um, allowing residential adjacent to those ponds. Um, those ponds are important for your visual identity, they're really important for, uh, recreation amenity for the businesses in the area, and if you add housing, it, it allows more safety, there's more eyes on that area, it brings developer, um, capital to help build the park, and also to put commercial and recreational uses adjacent to that park, which we think are totally appropriate. Um, so we'd like you to look at adding the residential as well down there. And then if you look at the mix of uses that you end up with, it's pretty, it's pretty balanced, because you have a, a lot of good commercial and, and jobs in the middle, but they need density. For that area to grow. For that area to grow and prosper, they need density. When we met with those outdoor rec owners, we said, "What would it take for you to expand or bring other businesses here?" And they said, "Well, we need some, we need it to be cool, we need a coffee shop." They'd really love a brew pub. They'd like access to those ponds, so that they could use them for their businesses. They'd like to have music or culture, you know, walkability, they want it to be a place. And in order to attract that kind of retail, you need some more density. Adding housing where you, in the yellow, both north of the station and then down adjacent to the ponds, would really enable you to get that, and really set you up, I think, for a very strong evolution and really a transformation over time. So what's next? We'll continue to meet with the property owners, with the businesses, with developers, people that are interested in it. We'd like to find a site for a business incubator. After talking to those businesses, a lot of them are small, 1,500 square foot and smaller spaces, rent like that, so we think it's prime for growing businesses and attracting new ones. And we'd like to see a business association set up in that area to unify, represent the area, be an advocate for it, bring more resources to it.
Ken, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And Merrill Lee will be here for questions when we get to that point on the agenda. So again, recap of the January 7th study session. We did give a little more background, and just so all of council knows, prior to this meeting, Patrick and I did meet with David and Amanda, your two newest fellow council members, to kind of give them some of the background, since we weren't going to be doing that tonight. So we went through the January 7th study session PowerPoint with them as well. So we, at that time, we reviewed kind of the two E infrastructure project list, how that had evolved from a previous list that was presented to council in June of 2018. And we did get a consensus motion from the council members that were there to keep moving forward with that list. We also talked about the potential public-private partnership on the Trax multifamily development, and similarly, we did receive city council consensus with some requests for clarifications from the city attorney on the eligibility of the costs that were being proposed to be funded. We did get that confirmation that all of the infrastructure costs that were being proposed to be funded with the 1.2 million in two E were clearly eligible, as well as some additional infrastructure expenses that actually are just being funded by the developers, part of their costs. There was also a question on whether or not we had to spend money on the Ridge Road and Ward Road traffic signal and intersection improvements. And the answer was yes, based on the city attorney. So we have included $600,000 for a traffic signal in the current list of funding projects, and we'd need to go back to the voters if at some point in time we couldn't build that and wanted to ask them if we could use it for something else of an infrastructure nature in the area. Tonight's agenda is fairly similar. We'll be briefer on some of the two E lists that we've already gone over. We do want to spend a fair amount of time on looking at some images and some plan views of the bridge and the linear park. So this was the two E project map that we're working off of, red are the streets, the dashed lines in green and red are streets that are on the north of the Trax that are being built in part by a developer. The green also represents the linear park, which extends all the way up through the Toll Brothers project and all the way down to the regional park. And the yellow represents the pedestrian and bike bridge over the railroad tracks. The regional park opportunities have not yet emerged, as you know. We still concur with Merrill Lee that there are opportunities, even if they end up being privately developed, to create some public spaces or some publicly usable spaces within that private development. I'm going to turn it over to Mark to go over project costs, and...
Yeah, so really quickly, just to kind of remind you of where we were in June of 2018, is we thought local streets might be up to $8 million. The Ped Bridge somewhere between a million and a half and $4 million, the linear park up to $5 million. And then the regional park, we thought up to $5 million. That clearly is not coming to fruition at this point, but again, there's an option to work with those folks to get some regional amenities down there that I think the whole area could take advantage of, even if it's not a city-owned park. And then, so we talked about Ward Road a little bit, and we're going to kick that can down the road a little bit, sorry for the pun, but there's just nothing that's really come to light on that except potentially grade separation project, which we probably are getting funding for through the latest round of Transportation Improvement Program funds that's coming out of Dr. Cog. So the mayor and I were at a meeting just this morning where the Jefferson County Forum approved the project list, and that was number five on the list, if I remember correctly. So we won't be starting that project for a while, we think we're pretty busy right now as it is, so we'll be starting Design Environmental in a few years from now on, doing something to try to grade-separate the Ward and BNSF crossing there. So where we are at the moment is our professional services cost for everything we're doing out there, and all the things that we're doing is right around $2 million. And that's mostly hiring folks to do all the stuff that we sort of normally do that are helping us out. They're doing some development RE4s, that's not a huge number, but getting all of our projects designed, our right-of-way consultant to acquire the right-of-way, and then the eventual construction management, we think that's all going to be about $2 million. Our right-of-way acquisition costs right now are running pretty conservatively at $900,000. We hope to cut that number in about half maybe, or something like that, before we're done. Construction projects are running about $11 million for everything that we've got on the allocation. For those of you who do math in your head pretty quick, that's almost $14 million, which is more than the $12 million we have allocated. But, but don't panic, we have a plan. Our plan is that we've got some other revenues and reimbursements happening on this project. So Orvada is working with us on both 52nd and Ridge Road. With 52nd not punching through, they agreed to do some cost sharing on Ridge Road between Tabor Street and our city boundary to the east. Right now, we're estimating their share of that at $2.1 million. We're hoping to get the linear park for nothing, we're hoping to get an easement for that space. We have met with several of the property owners at the bottom of the big hill where the park's going to be, and they seem pretty agreeable to letting us take over the maintenance of that slope with the construction of the linear park. And the folks that were there are pretty influential on their various owners' associations, and so we think we can do that. So we think that's going to save us some money on that. And then parkland dedication fees, about a half million dollars of that coming from all the projects on the north side of the Trax, and those would be allocated towards that linear park as sort of that regional park community that we have there. So our net result is we're about $700,000 under the $12 million. And again, we think the traffic signal is not going to be permitted by CDOT, so that's another $600,000. So it leaves us about $1.3 million that we, we've got plenty of other things we can spend it on, but right now that we've identified that much money for something in the future here. So just to break things down a bit more, we are contributing, Hans Ranch, the project, the townhome project on the north part of the old Apaca farm there at 52nd, is going to be building some storm sewer for us, and so as a part of their project, just from a phasing standpoint, so we're giving a little over $200,000. Right now, 52nd's pricing at about $2.9 million, and Orvada's going to be reimbursing us about half of that. Tabor Street's pricing at about $500,000, and Ridge is pricing out at $700,000. We haven't determined the exact split of cost share on Ridge yet. We're working on that. We think the Ped Bridge is running about $3.2 million, and that South Plaza area is running about $900,000. A pretty good chunk of that Ped Bridge is both the bridge and the elevators are the two big costs on that. The linear park, as we'll be showing you tonight, we think that runs about $700,000. So we did, we did some value engineering on that, we think we've got a great product that's going to serve the needs we've got in for a pretty good price right now. The Ward Road-Ridge intersection is, we've got $700,000 in the budget allocated right now. $100,000 is for the initial improvements that we'll be doing this summer, which is to make Ridge Road a three-quarter movement, so you can go right in, right out, and left in, but not left out. And then there's, again, there's that $600,000 that Ken mentioned that will be towards a signal if we could ever do it, but we don't think we can, so we'll probably have to deal with that. The Trax project right now, we're showing $1.2 million, that'll be a further discussion item. So the pedestrian bridge plaza and linear park, we hired some folks at AECOM, the consultant that's acting as a staff extension, to put together some 15% plans for us. And what we've got right now, between the Ped Bridge, the Plaza, and linear park, it gives us great connectivity between the station and all the employment uses to the south, plus the ponds to the south and the future development that's down there. Every single meeting we've had with the folks in the south side of the Trax, they've been thrilled with the idea of having a Ped Bridge, so they've got really quick immediate access to that station. We think it's going to be a real aesthetic improvement for that area. We just had a meeting today with some folks, and they were excited about how much nicer it's going to look over there, if we continue with what we've got shown right now. And then that linear park would be maintained by the city, and that's a big selling point for those property owners, we're next to the linear park on that, on that east side of the linear park. We're proposing that to be an easement, we think we've got some good traction to make that happen. The plaza right now does require some right-of-way, we need about a little over 16,000 square feet of right-of-way. We are going to move that cul-de-sac that's there today to the west, as far west as we can, just to get it closer where the bridge is, but we think we can then give some of that ground back to those folks, and it's about 3,000 square feet. We think it's about a quarter of an acre that we'll need to buy from them. And we did have a pretty good meeting with them today about the possibility of doing that. We didn't ask for any answers today, we just presented information, they're going to think about it and get back with us, but the meeting was pretty positive. So we have a video that our esteemed pilot, Mr. Art, shot for us, just to show you sort of the location of linear park and what it looks like today, and then we'll show you some graphics of what it will look like. So just to orient you, this is at the north end, right at the cul-de-sac, looking south. So to the left is one of the large industrial office buildings, then there's a couple of other places here. This building is relatively new, it was built within the last couple of years. So we're just going to play the video for just a minute. It is playing, so we're thrilled. So at this location, the park would mostly be on the top of the slope, and then as we clear this last building, or this first building, the park will start to run down the slope to catch the grade at the other end. We've got a couple of locations, we're proposing to have stairs that go down to the bottom, so people that can use stairs will be able to get up there. And then we'll land down here at the bottom where the I-70 frontage road is, then overlooking where the ponds are. And so that is our video. But we thought that would give you a good idea of just what we're looking at. So just to sort of orient you, this is the station itself up here, these are the Trax, both the RTD Trax and the BNSF Trax. This would be the bridge, this is the plaza area with the cul-de-sac, this is the connecting road that would have some improvements done to it. Then the linear park is this feature that runs, I'm not running my mouse very straight, sorry, that runs down this, down to the bottom. So we're going to show you some images associated with that. So the first one is of the Ped Bridge itself, and so this is our artist's rendering of what that would look like, maybe if Steve was flying his drone right about this location and looking at the Ped Bridge. So you can see the stair towers, the elevator towers, this is the bridge itself, another stair tower. This is the driver relief station over on the other side of the Trax. RTD left us some room to land back here when they purchased the ground from the Harmsins for us to do that. So the next image is of a little bit more of the, sort of a ground-level plaza shot looking back up towards the bridge. So there's a little center median thing here in the middle of this cul-de-sac that we could do some public art on or something else. This could be an area for quick drop-offs, if you were going to just, you know, drive up, do a quick kiss-and-ride kind of thing, they could jump off and go run over and get across the Trax. There's also some parallel spaces here for someone that might need a little more time to unload. If you're going to the airport, you could pull around there, get all the bags out, get everything situated, and then head on out. So the next spot is a cross-section of the linear park that is shown right next to this building. And so there's a 10-foot wide concrete path, a little gabion wall, there's quite a bit of natural rock features being used already in this development that's on the south side of the Trax, we wanted to keep that, there'd be Ped Lights along this to keep it lit up. And then we do some xeric landscaping along the slope here, just to help dress that slope up and help it look nicer and those kind of things. In the middle of this, which is right at the top of where the, this lower portion has a fair amount of grade getting up the hill, the rest of this is relatively flat, we thought we'd put a place for people that needed to stop and catch their breath, like me, to stop and catch their breath. And so again, you sort of see the gabion walls, and look, we'd probably add some benches and maybe a bike repair station or some different things to this little area to activate it. And then as we continue south, again, maybe halfway down the hill, this is what our cross-section might look like. So this parking lot for the lower area is down here, our 10-foot concrete path, our Ped Lights, and then the xeric landscaping that we do on the sides. Down at the south entrance, in a perspective looking at that, it could look something like this. I think this upper wall might not be quite this tall, so this might be a little shorter, but something like this to sort of get the people off the street and then heading up the linear park where the lights are shown. So, and that's the part where I quit talking. And Mr. Art comes up and talks about the stuff he knows about.
Thank you very much, Mark. So the projects we've been talking about so far are really built by the public realm. Now we're talking about a project to, that's going to be built by the private realm in there, so it's the Trax apartment complex. As we talked at our last meeting, we're trying to get density around that station there, and this allows us to bring that true density in there and start creating a neighborhood that Merrill Lee talked about around there. So if we put multifamily down at the pond, we put multifamily up at the station, we start to create opportunities for some retail, commercial developments to start occurring in that area. So the Trax apartments are, sit on approximately 2.2 acres, and they consist of anywhere from 270 to 250, 280 units of market-rate apartments. That difference varies on if they decide to go up to a fifth floor in the center of the complex, they haven't yet made that determination on that. Within the project, really exciting project, high amenities there, the exterior units all have balconies that will overlook the train station, as well as a view up to the front range and out to Denver. They will have a business center inside of the facility there, rooftop pool, many other amenities within the apartments. And the large part of that is structured parking. And I know at the last meeting, we talked about the structured parking and that none of the two E money should be dedicated toward that, and just to let you know that it will not be. The parking structure is fully urban renewal TIF-funded, and that's part of that project there. We have determined through our legal counsel that the structured parking is a public use, because it is a better utilization of land along the project, it doesn't require surface parking there. So it's a better utilization of the property there. So the overall funding gap is just over $8 million for the project there. We did have that trued up by a third-party economic and planning systems, worked for the Urban Renewal Authority, was paid for by the developer, but on behalf of the Urban Renewal Authority in the city, and they did true up those numbers to show that there is a gap in the project that needs to be done. So without the use of some public monies, the development of the Trax project would not be feasible. Let's see, so what we're asking for tonight is the use of, to continue on with the use of the 1.2 in two E assistance. And what that would do, that would get us a $54 million project, that is the total investment by the developer to build the Trax project. The renewal Wheat Ridge, the Urban Renewal Authority is considering the tax increment financing agreement with the developer for this of approximately $6.9 million. We had a meeting last Tuesday night, and at that meeting, the Urban Renewal Authority voted to wait to approve that agreement based upon city council's determination on the use of two E funds for this project. So this is how the project will look, it's hard to really tell what it is, but the parking structure sits in the center. So this is the utilization of a two-story parking structure that will be parking for all the residents in the facility. The apartments will surround it. What the two E funds will really be used for, the dedication will be for the construction here of half of what is 51st Avenue coming through, tying into Tabor Street, and all the amenities surrounding the apartments. If you go out there right now, there aren't any amenities surrounding that old Hans Ranch facility. This will put trees in there, grass, a very nice pedestrian field near that train station, and that's what really the two E funds will be used for. So this is what the two E eligible costs are, and if you look down that list there, you'll see that total two E funds have been identified at $1.59 million for the project of eligible costs. These have been trued up, and they truly are eligible costs. Again, the project will only be utilizing 1.2 million of the needed 1.4 million of eligible costs. million of eligible cost into the project. This is what the building conceptually will look like. This is what the last version that we have. They have switched architects since we received this last version, but for the most part, this is really what it'll look. So, you can see the balconies that will, they're not just traditional straight balconies that come out. They have actually an angle to them, so they kind of parallel the track that runs along there. Very, a lot of glass on the outside, so it's not just a stucco wall that you're staring up there. Uses of different elements in there of bricks along there. It's going to be a really beautiful project up there that's going to start bringing on some additional demands at that area and some developer interest in there. And I believe that's what I have, and I'm going to turn it back to Ken.
And one, we can maybe cover this in the discussion, but one thing that you maybe picked up when you looked at the pedestrian bridge and, more importantly, the Linear Park is, there was some discussion at the previous meeting about concern that, I think Council member Pon brought it up, that whether the cost estimate that we had at that time was realistic, it wasn't. They reestimated those costs and they about doubled. We made the decision at that point to, you know, do some value engineering, I guess. And we went from a two-facility design, one for bikes and one for pedestrians, to a one-facility design, which really went a long ways towards controlling some of those costs and getting it down to that seven-hundred-thousand-dollar number. But we can talk more about that if you have questions. So, next steps, finalize the roadway design. We're really working with SCH on that as we speak. I think we have sixty percent plans and we're working on nineties. So, that'll tee us up to be able to have right-of-way drawings to start making those acquisition offers. As I think we've mentioned, we've got a great partnership with Arvada on improvements and cost-sharing on Fifty-second Avenue and Ridge Road. We certainly expect that to continue. And we'll continue working with Mary Lee Utter, as she has outlined, and again, she's available for questions as well. We do want kind of council head nodding to develop a scope of work, to develop, I guess it would be thirty percent plans for the Linear Park would be the next step, and for the pedestrian bridge. And again, we'd use our on-call designer, SCH, for that contract. So, we'd like to work on bidding that out as well, or getting a scope of work. And we, I don't know if we have any update on our contact with, is it Luis Benitez? But...
He is in Longmont, with the state.
Oh, jeez, okay. Okay. But certainly continuing to trail focus on our burgeoning outdoor rec business in that area. So, excited about those opportunities as well, and excited about the kind of communications that we've had with many of those groups recently. They really are an engaged group and ready to move forward in partnership with the city. We've mentioned before, and I know, you know, when Mark went over the numbers, he, you know, they're not final right now, but, you know, we've got about one-point-three million that's maybe left over after of the twelve. You know, we've long thought that there might be an opportunity, two, three years down the road, to work with RTD, to talk about, you know, maybe a better utilization of the parking lot, or, as I think you're aware, the bus loading facilities that were designed into the station are not presently anticipated to be very actively used. There were significant number of buses that were anticipated during the environmental approval back in, whatever that was, two thousand thirteen. When it came down to actually planning out routes more recently, it became apparent that very little bus activity would be needed. So, the bus bay area as well could be a future redevelopment opportunity, and RTD's certainly more than willing to have those conversations. It's just not ripe yet. I mean, they want to be operational with their system for a year and a half, two, three years, to really understand what their needs are going to be for their land there and then see what partnerships might emerge. So, it's nice to think that we might have a few dollars left over to preserve, to potentially contribute to a partnership, a public-private partnership on a redevelopment of those two parcels, if that comes to fruition. We like to close with our fiftieth anniversary logo. And we're all available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ken. Okay, that's the staff presentation. Why don't we throw this open for questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the packet, there was an indication of the use of HUD twenty-one, two-twenty-one-D in the financing of the Tracks project. The mention in the packet indicated that this was an indication of affordable housing, but there's no requirement within the HUD regulations for that financing to require affordable. So, I guess my first question is, is there any units in that Tracks development that would be deemed or designated or limited to affordable housing?
Well, I know we've had conversations with them about whether we could identify some units. I don't think we've really gotten traction on that necessarily. Patrick or Steve may have a better update, but as of now, I don't think there's any deemed affordable units in the Tracks development.
And then, in the packet, with respect to the Urban Renewal Authority, they indicated that the loan-to-value is approximately eighty percent, and that there's some questions, I guess, as it relates to what the loan-to-value is available within that HUD program. But I guess my biggest concern here is that the project costs are fifty-four million, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. If you take a debt service coverage ratio of that amount, you would be able to get a loan for about forty-eight million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. And then, if you're not looking at the debt service, debt service coverage ratio, and you're just looking at the loan-to-value, they would be able to get a loan from HUD for forty-five million, three-hundred-and-eight thousand, five, and fifty-two dollars and zero, and two cents. So, when you do that math, there's a little bit left, what, two-point-two million in equity that they would have to bring to the table. And we've now seen this twice, and we still haven't met with the person asking us for this money. And I guess my next question is related to what kind of equity is the developer putting into this deal, or if any?
Do you have the pro forma for any?
Okay. And then, I guess my overall concern about this particular TIF financing deals, we just heard that, why is the developer paying our financial analysts to analyze their information? To me, that seems like a conflict of interest in that if I'm paying you to do a job and you do it in a way that is disinteresting to me, I'm not, it just seems like an absolute conflict of interest. Why would we allow the developer to pay for our financial analysts of their information? It seems like we're...
The contract for the work is actually with us, the city, but it's a fee that we charge the developer to, because it's, you know, it's ten thousand, if not more, dollars sometimes, if not more, for these types of analysis. So, the contract's with the city or the Urban Authority, but the invoice gets sent to the developer to pay. So, they work for us, not the developer.
But if they're working for us, the only arguments I saw in the analysis was the "but for" analysis. There didn't seem to be any indication of analysis related to our return on investment for this TIF financing, that we're only looking at what the developer needs and not looking at what is the benefit to the city relative to this tax increment financing.
Well, that's the, that is the scope of the work, is to determine what the "but for", they look at the "but for" analysis for this project to work financially for the developer, what type of gap coverage is required. You know, I think the benefits for projects are numerous and not all numerical, right? So, that's not part of the scope of our financial analyst. It's looking at the gap.
And just looking at the financial gap, you have a HUD loan of eighty-three percent loan-to-value. Their return on equity right now, as it stands, without our investment, is fourteen percent. And if you include our investment, it goes up to twenty percent. So, while, yes, the return on costs over the entire project is five percent, you can't find another multifamily project with a cap rate higher than that. So, in my mind, they're already getting fourteen percent, and we're looking to see whether or not we should give them a twenty percent rate of return. In my mind, the 2e funds should not be used for this, and this investment, as it stands, would not be an investment of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I've got, I have a couple of questions. We keep talking about those two ponds there, about how neat they are and what a valuable asset they could be or whatever. Who owns, who owns those ponds? And do we have any clue at all is what they're going to look like five years from now?
We do know who owns them. Mark Jolstadt is the owner of the Western Pond. He acquired it in the last several years when Arvada sold it. He has been working with a potential multifamily developer for a portion of the property, and then also a portion of the property might be used for more commercial purposes. Bob Vermillion is the longtime owner of the eastern of the two ponds, and that is actually, has long been entitled through an ODP zoning document to build a hotel and kind of associated support, commercial services, restaurant shops, et cetera. Not, neither owner, at this point in time, has interest in selling to the city, per se. So, that's why we're kind of pursuing, you know, public-private opportunities that might emerge when they submit land use applications. In terms of the ponds themselves, you know, and what condition they're in, it's our understanding, though I haven't been privy to reading the reports, that they've both been looked at in terms of water quality and have a very good water quality. So, that's about all I know as to the status of the ponds down the road. They appear to have been of high quality in terms of the water resource.
But there's nothing to preclude, especially on the East Pond, that they continue just filling that sucker in and doing like they did to the pond over at Sheridan, where they used to rent the jet skis and just fill it in and let it set for a while to consolidate and then just sell it as land?
That's certainly a possibility. You know, we don't control the water rights, and we're not really in a regulatory role when it comes to water rights. So, we're not really in a position to tell them they cannot fill them in. We are in a position to regulate that through grading and fill permits, and they do have, they have had over the years the appropriate grading and fill permits to do the fill work that they've done.
I'm just a little concerned because we kind of keep dangling that carrot, and it's on a very long stick, that they're going to just fit right into our base camp and what have you theme, and I'm not sure they're going to be there five years from now. I mean, it's, you know, location, location, location. If someone ever gets to hook up with an excavation contractor who's got excess dirt, I can see them getting filled up in a heartbeat. Do we have actual, and we may have seen it at some time, I tried to look at it, I couldn't find the old paperwork, but actual usage, ridership numbers for the end-to-line hour station from RTD? Do we know how many people are going to get on the train and off the train every day?
Yeah, I think, I think in that press release they sent out today, I think they said nine-thousand trips per day on opening. Does that sound right? And up to twelve thou, I can pull it up here in a second. I think then up, growing to twelve thousand by twenty forty-three or something, does that sound right?
Nine thousand trips, nine thousand people getting on that hour station?
Well, that might have been the whole G line. So, I don't know if I had...
That's what I'm asking, because we only have two-hundred-and-ninety-some parking spaces. And...
I don't remember. Mark, do you happen to remember any of those numbers from, it's been a while since we've gone over those?
I don't remember the numbers either. We did look at those numbers back when they came through in two thousand twelve as a part of their SUP to have the station there, and, you know, a lot of that was driven by bus traffic. When the bus traffic went away, we had several meetings with RTD senior management staff about what's going on and where we were. We're worried about the number of parking spaces that we've got out there, and they've reassured us that based on their analysis and their experience in the other lines, that our two ninety are going to be fine. We do have the ability to immediately add one-hundred-and-fifty spaces to that, to that parking lot. RTD has the ability to do that, should that thing get maxed out on day one. So, so they, and then they've got the ability, from an environmental standpoint, to double the size of the parking lot to the north, but we made them buy enough ground, and they've got it planned, that they can immediately get out there and pave and add another one-hundred-and-fifty spaces, should that become necessary.
RTD's always had a plan, but I remember sitting here about three years ago, and I was sitting over in that section in the peanut gallery, and there was a gentleman here from Dr. Cog telling us about the West Line that goes up to Goldland. And he said, "Well, now, they had some problems with their ridership numbers, and we're not sure exactly where the numbers are, but they're only a quarter to a third of what they projected." And my concern here is, we keep talking like these numbers are cast in stone, and we want to pay for sixteen, you know, some private developer to put in six levels of parking and this and that because we think everyone's going to come there to get on the end of that train, and I don't believe it. So, before we start investing money in a private developer to make him well, we need to make sure that we're making us well. And I don't trust RTD numbers, RTD's numbers, a lick on that. I mean, you know, their own, their own deal was, it's going to be bus trips here while they went away. So, I'm just trying to figure out how many people are actually, how much business that train, that end station, that dead end, is actually going to generate, that's going to bring people in there and say, "Yeah, we're going to get on that." And if not, then we've got to start building roads.
You mean the, you mean the station that's the start of the line?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually the end of the line. Make no, make no mistakes about it. The start of that line is Denver. All these road, all roads lead to Rome, and all train stations lead to Denver.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
So, I just have a couple of questions. So, I know some of the 2e funds proposed, one of it was to complete Fifty-first, or to make a Fifty-first, because we don't have a Fifty-first, right?
Fifty-first is being developed in association with the two adjacent properties, with some, some of that money proposed to be used towards the, within the one-point-two million.
Right. So, I think, I guess, and I think I have asked this before and got the answer, but, so a part of it is, like, part of me questions, so why don't we put all these roads that we're working on, if it'd be Fifty-second and Fifty-first, and these are the dollars we're all putting towards the roads and the sidewalks, to put that all in one lump place, kind of like what we did with Arvada and Wheat Ridge sharing Fifty-second, and say that's 2e funds? I think we somewhat, I don't want to say complicated, but it confuses things when it's, you know, hey, this Tracks project, and these roads, and this infrastructure, and it sounds like we're giving it to 2e funds to a developer, when we're really, from my understanding, it's cheaper for them to do those roads as a part of their development than for us to put it into a big road plan, like, say, we are with Fifty-second. Is that correct? Because I guess, because, so, because it's confusing of why it's just not all here and say 2e funds, it's a part of this development, and, oh, by the way, we're going to shuffle some 2e funds there, and it's just kind of a perception that, that the 2e funds are being used for something different than what their intention was.
I think for a project like Tracks, where the improvements to Fifty-first are discreet and adjacent to their property, you know, it can make sense to have them just build that into their, you know, contract model and deal with one contractor, whereas, you know, when we're looking at improvements on Fifty-second that are, that are going to span, you know, eight, ten properties, it makes a lot more sense for us to manage that as a city.
Right, okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify that, because it's confusing, but it's not when you kind of hear your explanation. And then, I guess my other question, going back to some of the urban renewal funds and the TIF funds, a lot of that is to build the parking garage, and it's, a part of the parking garage is to make the best use of our property and our land, so that, so it's not a parking garage for RTD passengers or those types of things, it's for the people living in those apartments.
It is, though there's been some talk of whether some could be available, but that's certainly to the public in general, but that's certainly not a done deal at this point. And yes, our urban renewal attorney has determined, you know, previous to this project, that the use of TIF funds for parking structures, because it reaches, the city's, meets the city's goal of more efficient land use in an area where we're trying to encourage more density, because it's adjacent to transit, that that's a completely appropriate use of TIF funds and urban renewal.
So, one more question. So, I just got to thinking, that fancy parking garage that Arvada did, I'm guessing that was probably TIF funds?
A lot of that was, I think, actually city dollars as well. Does that sound... A lot of that was, I think, actually city dollars as well. Does that sound right, Patrick?
I think that's off the topic, but I think it just goes to show that.
Just the parking garage at the station. Yeah, that, the city of Arvada put quite a bit of money into that and R T D did also. Um, I think a, a, a more relevant example is the apartment complex that went up along Wadsworth and Arvada, Rod, Wadsworth and Ralston Road.
Uh-huh.
Um, that has, um, under, underground. Does it have a garage or just, no, it's, it's a podium? There's, yeah, um, yeah, that was heavily subsidized with urban renewal and city funding. Um, they actually gave them the land. Um, there was a huge TIF with that deal. Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think it was more than this project.
Mm-hmm, okay. I was, I'm just trying to kind of compare some like for likes to see what other folks is, are doing.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thanks for everybody's, uh, expo, expo meet. Thank you for explaining your different parts. Why can't I say that word? Um, what, one, the first time when this came up, um, I supported it and I still support it. I think it's important for us to put density where density is um, necessary, where it can be supported with, uh, it can be supported with the roadways, it can be supported with the, um, train station. Um, we're, we'll be putting in, um, or, you know, shops and, uh, businesses will be coming in there. And so I think it's important for us to, we have to build, it's placemaking. And so we have to make sure that when we're balancing, we're looking at placemaking, we need a, a balance. Um, otherwise, if the scale, if it's too much commercial, the scale gets tipped too far and if it's too much residential, the scale again gets tipped too far. So, I think this is important, um, for us to support. I also, we also did make a consensus on, on January seventh to support the one point two. And I want to just quote our ballot language. "Under the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station area, construction of street, bicycle, pedestrian, public amenities and other infrastructure improvements to address traffic growth." Okay, we're working on that. "And facilitate redevelopment and economic development opportunities in the area surrounding the Gold Line Station." This is part of working on that. When, the day after the voters approved two E, I was at a conference, um, with staff and it was a transportation-oriented development conference and we were talking to different developers. All the cities were there and, um, we were talking to different developers and when we said, "Our voters just gave us money to catalyze growth in this area," and they said, "That is excellent to hear because there's nothing there." And so they need the help and the incentive to bring their private dollars up there. Um, so I, I think it's important. I do have two quick questions and just to kind of clarify kind of what Mr. Urban was talking about, the, the analyst, when they did the analyzing, the gap and there are, they're contracted by us, but we have the person who claims they have the gap pay for it. Is that so to be sure that they're not inflating their gap numbers? I mean, is that kind of one of the checks and balances is to be sure that if they say we need ten million dollars, they actually need ten million dollars?
Well, sure, that's why we hire, hire a third party and they work for the, the city or the urban authority to represent our interest in, in making sure that we're not, um, providing, um, a subsidy that is not necessarily, um, appropriate based on, um, many different factors, um, including the, the developers' equity into the project, the land costs, the, the rents that the apartments can get. And, um, so all those are analyzed in the, in the, um, in the work that E P S does for us.
Thank you. And then my only other question, which is kind of a, it's slash a, a question of maybe can we do this? When I was looking through the, um, city venture report, the, um, item number one B attachment, what really stood out to me was that the outdoor recreation businesses were, were asking for some things and, and some of it was, um, uh, was what I would call what falls in a creative district. And I know that Colorado has the Colorado Creative Industries and they have creative district grants where they give you money to create, um, placemaking creatively in your spaces. And so I, I would like, and I, and I don't know how to kind of put that bug out there, but it would be really great if we could look into something like that to get some money from the state of Colorado to, um, help with our placemaking.
Mr. Matthews?
I'm getting a little kind of confused here because we're bringing a lot of different, you just went things into this discussion. Could you just back up a few go- deals again? You wanted to show where this eight, five point eight million or whatever, eight point five million dollar funding gap. You had a slide up there where it mentioned that. And it just, you, just when you were going through it and I was gonna ask you to bring it up, but I didn't wanna cut her off and, and, um.
Is, is that, was that one of your slides?
Yeah.
You, you just went through it just a minute ago and, and that eight point five, that the gap funding slide showed up. 'Cause I wanna make sure we're all just talking apples and apples and, and no, and aren't getting everything. Overall funding gap of over eight million dollars. And that's just for, that's for whom? I mean, is it for our person, portion of our road building work? Is it for just this parking structure that I thought our, our city attorney said we couldn't use T, two E money for?
We're not.
So what is that eight million dollars?
The eight million dollars is, um, the, the bare minimum that they need for the project to make financial sense to meet their.
And that's strictly for the guy that wa- that wants to build the apartment?
It's for the fifty-four million dollar Trax project.
Okay. Um, why is that our problem? A, I guess, I have to ask. And B, you know, I don't care how many independent guys we're, we're, uh, hiring to support a supposedly go over these numbers again. I, and I've been fussing over this for longer than I've been sitting here in this chair is that, uh, there's an awful lot of corporate welfare that goes on in, in a lot of this development work. And I'm recalling a study I read or a report I read in the newspaper and that big resort they built out in Aurora, they had like a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars worth of TIF or something. It was humongous numbers. And after it's all built, somebody went out and hired someone to go check the books and found out that they got paid fifty-eight more million dollars in TIF than they really needed. So, I appreciate the fact that we've got someone doing some checking on this, but let's kind of try and stay grounded a little bit. And before we get carried away, what is that funding gap? Is that line item number ten, twelve, fourteen and eighteen in their budget? I mean, what, what is that eight million dollars that somehow we're supposed to help them come up with? What is that actually funding?
Well, it's, in the case of, uh, it, it could fund a variety of things, right? The bottom line is that the rents and the income that the property will generate at the end of the day don't cover the upfront costs, whether that be.
Well, then maybe they ought to figure out how to do that. What is it covering? I'm, I'm, I'm really curious. I mean, where is that money going to be spent?
It's, it's covering eligible, the, the six point nine million in, in TIF is covering eligible urban renewal costs. Six million of that is the parking structure and there's a lot of other eligible costs. And one point two million is being proposed to be spent with two E funds towards public infrastructure that is associated generally with the roads and stormwater facilities.
I've heard it mentioned here that if we, you know, the necessary high density that we need, well, I'm not so sure that high density is a necessity of life. And I'm not sure it's a necessity of the city existing and, and going on for the welfare of our taxpayers. And we gotta get into these terms where we say, well, that's the money that's necessary. Like, oh my God, you know, the world's gonna end in twelve years if we don't spend eight million dollars.
Whether or not to spend it is a policy question for city council that we're asking tonight. It's needed for the project to make financial sense for the developer.
But the project as they've proposed it doesn't mean that there couldn't be another proposal where they go nip and tuck a little bit and maybe they only need, maybe they still need three million dollars. I don't know. But the idea that it's necessary or life is going to end as we know it, that's the part I'm objecting to.
Well, Mr. Matthews.
You know where that money's gonna go.
Nobody's saying that. Uh, again, as Ken just said, it's, it's necessary. If, if city council and the city, the community wants a project like this, it's, it's necessary. If you don't, you vote it down. And tha- that's the deal.
And that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to bring out is when they say it's necessary, it doesn't, if they don't get their money, it doesn't mean it's the end of the world.
No, it just means this project won't happen as proposed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pond?
Great segue. Thank you. Um, and I wanna reiterate something that council member Hoppy, um, said, which is that I, I'm in a similar position that I was at the end of the consensus the last time that we discussed. I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the additional information. Um, and to the point that we were just discussing, um, I think, you know, if we are going to catalyze the growth in this area, which is the intention of, uh, largely the intention of putting this on the ballot in the way that it was and has been our vision, maybe not all of our visions, but I, that is, is a, has been a consensus vi- vision moving on and this is, this is necessary for us, um, to, to move forward. And to that extent, I, I, I still support it and I'm not offended by the criticism, which is to say that we should still be critical. It's a lot of money. It's an investment. We should be critical about it. Um, but I do agree, um, you know, with, with, um, the fact that density in fact does matter in this location and for this, for this typology, um, for us to be competitive and that right now we're talking about, you know, starting, getting momentum as the line comes into service. I think it's reasonable to be critical of R T D's ridership, but then again, um, I, I think if we look out over long term, uh, in fact, um, many of these lines, including the West Line, um, have had continued success regardless of, of some ebb and flow or maybe some initial, um, um, ridership that didn't meet the exact numbers. So, I think it's worthwhile being critical of that. Um, but again, I think if you look at this over the long period of time, have, you know, creating the density and the impact in this location, lining up with the, um, the line, you know, coming online, I think is, is important to us. So, to that extent, I, I, um, I, I will continue to, to, to support this. Again, not, not to dismiss the criticism as necessary, um, conversation and things that we ought to be um, critical of. So, a couple of things maybe by way of comment, maybe, maybe question. Um, I, I am, I'm, I'm, I am concerned about a couple of the things that were, um, you know, as they've evolved, I mean, the, I'm, I'm actually sorry that I was right about the, the cost estimate on, on the linear park because I think in fact the current cross-section of that is, is, I, I, you know, perhaps and I, and I'm not trying to be contentious, but it's euphemistic to call this a park at this point. It's a multi-use trail that is connecting some things and that's okay, but that's what it's gotten to and I think we ought to think hard about that. Is there any, is there any way for us to, to plan for future investment in that, in that location? Are we okay with it being that compressed at this point, um, you know, financially and therefore, you know, from a, from an actual placemaking standpoint? Or we should just pause there for a second. I know that we're, we're talking about some other big picture things here, but that's important. Um, because I do think that it's diminished, um, quite a bit in this, in this version. So I, I, I mean, I'll ramble for a second and if anyone wants to answer or comment on, that's fine, but I am a little bit concerned about it and I do think that the terminus ends of that, you know, are, are also important. And it looks like the plaza piece and the landing of the bridge is, is coming along and actually that, that feels right and the investment feels right there. Um, but I, I think there is a concern about how it meets the, um, the street, uh, at the ponds and, and, you know, whether we're picking up bike infrastructure, pet in, infrastructure there and whether or not we're going to develop that. Of, it, it shouldn't be surprising. I'm, I'm very interested in Pond Park. Um, and, and, and really hope that that, um, sticks. However, um, you know, I, I can see and I, and I agree with the concern, concerns from council member Matthews about, you know, are, are we gonna be able to hold on to this because I don't think it's been dangled in front of us as much as we're very hopeful that it, that it can, can stay on the map. Um, and, and, and I'm very, and, and I'm even more hopeful now with a park named after me, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
I appreciate your humor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I just wanna say that I, I appreciate staff taking our feedback from, uh, the last study session and uh, I definitely would not have supported the one point two million dollars, um, in two E funds going towards a parking structure, uh, for a, uh, private, uh, developer. Um, my question is, would that one point two million dollars still be spent on roads and infrastructure improvements if it weren't going towards this private project? Like where, where else would that money go if we weren't giving it to the Trax project?
I, I think a, a portion of it probably would, but I'm, I'm not sure. I think it, it's covering more of the costs for this project than it, we're spending more money than we would need to for Fifty First because we're putting it towards other things.
So those, those street improvements that are, that are proposed for that one point two million dollars wouldn't necessarily, um, be needed if it weren't for this Trax program, like, project?
Well, probably similar projects would be needed. I mean, it'd be a different project, right? So it's kind of hard to say, but, uh, you know, the, the, the project or the, the costs that are being proposed to be funded by two E include, you know, things like landscaping, things like stormwater improvements as well. You know, some of those might have been borne by the private developer, uh, if the project didn't have a gap. So, uh, it's just hard to compare kind of apples to oranges. Uh, but we're, you know, we think we're, we would certainly have spent a portion of those money on, on things like Fifty First improvements.
And maybe an example of that would, Leah, would be of, um, because this property could, um, has the rights by use to build townhome project, um, and that may not need a subsidy as large if, if any because it's, you know, it's a cheaper product to build. Um, and yeah, they could probably do their own landscaping. So, that's, again, that's back to the policy question if, what does council want? Do they, are they okay with the townhome project there or would they want something that's, that's denser? Um, and in this case, a denser project is, is, it needs a subsidy.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with respect to Fifty Second Avenue, the, uh, the revenue that we're gonna receive back from the city of Arvada, is there any money coming back from Jefferson County related to that improvement? Uh, not at this time. We had been in negotiations with them. We had an M O U that the city managers and county managers execute, executed last year. They contemplated the potential for an I G A. Uh, we, and then, uh, early in, was it January, uh, or sometime in January of this year, uh, the county informed us that they were not gonna be, uh, able to provide funding for the project. Uh, so that's kind of where it stands right now. So is that then reflected in the, the amounts for Fifty Second? Yeah, we're at this point working on a fifty-fifty cost share with Arvada. Uh, we may get some money from C dot for some of the, uh, infrastructure or the interchange, in, intersection improvements at Fifty Second and Ward Road. Uh, and we'll continue talking with the county, uh, to see if we can identify any partnership opportunities there because we thought was, that, that was the right direction to head. Uh, but, uh, the partnership with Arvada is strong. Um, C dot's been helping out as well, but yeah, the cost shares have, have essentially changed at this point for Fifty Second to fifty-fifty. And we're still figuring out based on a update to the traffic study what an appropriate cost share will be on Ridge Road. And then as far as Fifty Second, will Jefferson County then be, uh, handing the rights over to us for that stretch of road or what's the status on that? It's an ongoing discussion, I think. Uh, they've approached us more recently with some interest in, uh, annexing, uh, their portion of the right of way into the city of Wheat Ridge. Um, there's some clear pros and cons to that, given that the road isn't currently improved. Uh, so we'd be taking possession, and when I say we, that's a, obviously a city council decision on whether you would choose to annex those properties, but uh, as currently proposed, we would be accepting, uh, on essentially unimproved right of way, uh, as somewhat of a liability. So, um, not exactly sure where those conversations are gonna go, but that's kind of the update. They have approached us about what would be the process for requesting, uh, that those be annexed into the city. And I, I see that as one potential, uh, additional use of two E funds that if the county were to annex this road back over to us, we would have, again, that liability to invest in and, you know, just to kind of set that aside, looking at the, the Trax project of it, of itself, if you guys are all hot and bothered over this and this is what you wanna do, I can't stop you, but I would ask that we at least look at inserting some kind of look prac provision into this contract that says that this is the developer's expected rate of return. And then if we reach that with the developer based on this one point two million dollar investment, then we split the difference, anything above that rate of return.
we split the difference, anything above that rate of return, thereby allowing us to, in hopes, we all think this is going to be the, you know, greatest thing since Jolly Rancher. But what I want to see is that we don't just hand a check over to developer for $1.2 million when we know that he's using HUD financing mechanism that could very well take up, if, in the worst-case scenario, if you look at the debt coverage ratio on this, it gives you a loan amount of $48 million. If the total project cost is $54 million, he could, in a sense, get $723,000 back from us if we pay that $6.8 million, based on his ability to leverage this project. So, I would ask us to at least consider inserting a provision that allows us to split the profits after a reasonable rate of return, so that we're not just giving this away without any, you know, encumbrances or any other kind of control over what happens. And this, I think, tells the developer, who we've yet to meet, that we want to invest in this area, but investing in this way with this provision that gives us that look-back clause, I think, would allow us to recoup some of this investment, hopefully, down the road.
Steve, can you add, I don't, is this an older financial analysis? Because I didn't think they were getting a HUD loan.
Yeah, correct. Oh, I did look at EPS. They are not getting the HUD loan, because HUD, the rent rates HUD calculated on the site didn't generate enough to get that loan to value. So, their private equity they're putting in, they actually found a private developer, the Forum Group, that would be coming in and will be investing. EPS does not track those numbers, what the private investment, they just know what the total cost is for the project, and what that gap is based upon the return on costs that they need on, for the project. So, they don't actually ask that question to developer, what is the private equity you're bringing? Because they have, they have to go out and find the bank loan, they have to find that remaining forty-some-odd million dollars.
That doesn't necessarily, Mr. Urban, change your question and thought?
No, no, my question was related to a provision that would allow us to gain a rate of return on our own, relative to, you know, the success of this project. Like you said, that the developer expects a certain rate of return. That's fine, what is that? And then, anything above and beyond that, we split between us, so that there's at least an ability for us to get something back on this.
We could certainly talk to my legal about inserting that, if that's possible to do in there. But they are capped at an amount, so it's not as if they're going, the developer will receive above and beyond. If the project, if the project performs better than they expected, they're still capped at that $6.9 million rate.
But I'm talking about the $1.2 million in 2E funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something, we can look at that. It's a good point.
Mr. Urban?
Well, and go-
If I could just add, we did a look-back provision similar to that for the Fruitvale project, so we certainly have a model for what that looks like.
And understanding the $1.2 million is not urban renewal?
True.
Okay, so.
But I guess I would also, you know, I mirror Mr., what Mr. Urban's saying is, you know, for instance, let's say they thought, I'm going to just throw out a number, just to pretend. Let's say they thought they'd get $1,200 for a one-bedroom, and $1,600 for a two-bedroom, but, you know, everything's groovy, and they're getting $1,600 for a one-bedroom, and $2,200 for a two-bedroom, let's just pretend. But I think that kind of warrants what Mr. Urban is saying, is that if you're getting a better rate of return, then the gap is smaller, and so, at some point, we need to kind of do a check-in on that and say, yay for you, yay for us, now, you know, let's share the opportunity. So, I hear what he's saying, and I think it's a fair request, if possible.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Two things have just kind of hit me here, as we've been discussing this. And number one is, I would kind of remind everybody that when we're talking about RTD, and about supporting the ridership and all that, I think ridership on these trains is somewhere in the neighborhood of at least 70, and maybe 80% subsidized by taxpayers already. So, you know, if we give them another $8 million upfront, that's not what I consider just to be the best thing since Nickel Beer. It's not like RTD is supporting itself. The other question I had was, and maybe Christie could explain that to me, but what's the involvement, and I always forget to ask this question, what's the involvement right now with urban renewal on this project, and how much money are they talking about of taxpayer money kicking into this deal?
Chris, uh, Ms. Davis?
Future taxpayer money, and what they may have in stock.
So, that was on the breakout.
How confident are you that that's?
You know, it was a, it was a discussion with urban renewal, and it was, we all talked about it, and because we are using dollars from the projects around it as well, and so, I, you know, it is a discussion that we had. And that's why, from my perspective, from a renewal Wheat Ridge, I didn't want to vote on the TIF until I knew if, again, kind of going back to what Mr. Goff said, is, yeah, we could put townhomes there, but is that really our vision? And if that's our vision, then there might be less need for some of the gap coverage. But if the vision is, if the council does say, hey, yeah, you know, this complex is going to be what we're looking for, we've heard experts say from a TOD station, you know, it is ideal to have a little bit more dense, density up there. And if that's something that the city council supports, we do, we did review the numbers, and we did feel that it was adequately, and we scrutinized it pretty well, broken down to public improvements. But a lot of it was, again, to just to ensure that it is the vision of the council and the city to move forward with a more dense project versus maybe something not as dense.
And that kind of brings up something I would like to bring out, just for everyone's future thoughts, is that when we're talking about projects like this, we have to remember there's other funding mechanisms that involve taxpayer money that we have very little control over. And I think they need to be brought, discussed in a little more depth, as to what the options are. I mean, you know, I don't know what we have, how we can control what urban renewal does, because they're a separate entity, contract entity, and we have, you know, other than who we appoint to a board eventually, we have no say what they want to do. And those things probably should be discussed, so that we're having a two-pronged discussion here on these tax dollars over here, and these existing tax dollars that you're collecting, plus whatever you think you'll get in the future, over here, and make sure that it's all compatible with a unified vision, and that's the point I was looking at.
Right, and I think that's my point, too, of why I wanted to bring it here. Because I think that there has been kind of the feeling of, you know, behind the scenes, and, oh my goodness, there's a separate entity going off on the wild, and those types of things. So, really, that's why I wanted to bring it here and discuss it, and make sure that that's, you know, something that council supports. Because from a public, I mean, I even said, from a PR standpoint, we don't want to be those people. We want, I think, renewal Wheat Ridge does want to be thoughtful and do the right thing. And so, with that discussion and that interaction, I think that's our goal.
I totally agree with you, and I appreciate it. That's what I'm trying to say, is that we need more of that, because I don't think the citizens understand that you guys are out there. I mean, if you go and talk to the average citizen, and you say, urban renewal, they say, who's that?
I invite them every minute.
I know. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that there's just a lack of awareness. And I appreciate the fact that that number's up there, and that we really do need to consider it as part of the total package, and any development we bring before the people in the future.
And one, just one clarification, because I don't think that this was your intent, but you, you know, there was kind of a comment of, before we give any developer $8 million. So, we don't upfront give developers $8 million. They will gradually get those increment financing through the addition of the property taxes. So, it's not like the city's, it's done, it's distributed, distributed at the time that those properties, taxes, and those things go up. So, again, it's not necessarily we're handing them $8 million, and then we're sitting here hoping for the best. They have as much risk in this as, in fact, more risk, because they're the ones with the loans, and those types of things.
Well, I understood. But also, if they pay off the monies that you've guaranteed, you're going to have a $25, 25-year, or whatever, probably, where you collect TIF on this project, correct?
Well, the clock's already been ticking, so it's a little less-
Whatever, that's the proxy.
It's a 2040, would be the last year.
Yeah, so, but if, if you collect everything that you've guaranteed in 14 years, do you keep collecting money on this project for the remaining 10 years, or does it stop? Because we do have projects where it's not stopped, and you're collecting-
Urban and authority continues collecting, but the project, the developer gets a capped amount.
No, but that's what I'm saying, URA is still collecting, urban renewal still keeps collecting money on the project.
Right, but those monies can only go for public improvements in those areas. So, like, say, for instance, the I-70 corridor, we wanted to do something with the hotels. Like, say we want, hey, say we hit the gravy train, and they pay them off, and we can do something with those hotels over there that we, you know, always wonder about. I mean, those urban renewal funds could go towards purchasing a property, or something like that.
Would you consider their parking structure, because that's what they wanted 2E money for, would you consider that as public improvement?
No, 2E money is not for the parking.
No, I'm saying, your renewal, urban renewal part, part of this, if that was part of their gap funding, and that's the question I was asking, is where is their gap funding? It seems to be a lot of it's around that parking structure.
It is.
And so, would some of the urban renewal funds end up, where they would take money out of this budget item over here and put it into the structure, and say, oh, well, we need the money over here?
Well, that's, you know, I-
And transfer funds.
It's an interesting discussion, but it's really, it's really sort of more related to renewal Wheat Ridge and the urban renewal process than really the 2E funds and the subject of our discussion today. I mean, it is, has a relationship.
The current funds that are allocated, the 6.9 that's in there, is going towards the parking structure, currently. So, it's not like I can, your question was kind of, oh, so you can go take this money and do a parking structure. It's, that's a part of the pro forma and the gap.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is that allows them then to take, it's just like when we raised taxes over here, and statewide level, all of a sudden, they take money out of this account and put it back over here. And so, all the money that, so like, schools don't get any more money, they just reallocated existing budget money over to something else, and use what was supposed to be improving the schools, doesn't go there. And that's what I'm asking, is that, are they, how do we know that they're not taking money that's required for the parking structure, and say, well, that's really public improvement over here?
They pay by invoice, don't they? I mean-
Yeah, the agreement will have a specified list of what the money can go towards, and like, you know, there's, they've identified over $11 million worth of expenses that are eligible for, that URA dollars can be used for. You know, $600,000 is for dedication of 51st Street, we're deciding to use 2E funds for those, or recommending that. Horizontal construction costs are $3 million, parking garages $6 million, owners, there's construction, architectural, engineering, professional fees, and financing costs. So, this list would have to be put in an agreement that Urban and All Authority approves, that says that this money's going to go to these categories. That's how it's done.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you. And I'd like to try to bring it back around to the $1.2 million 2E funds, and I feel like we've had some pretty good discussion, and Mr. Urban had a good recommendation, so I'm going to try for a consensus. I'd like to ask for a consensus to approve $1.2 million for public roads, landscaping, and public infrastructure related to the Trax multifamily project, including a look-back clause. Yeah, look-back clause.
Looks like we have consensus on that.
Thank you. And then, I'd like to ask-
Could I ask some clarification on that first?
Yes, please.
We've already, we already have the money that's coming in from the extra sales tax.
Yes.
So, what, just what are we approving here?
We're approving the appropriation of the $1.2 out of the $12 million. We have, we have the $33 million in bonds that we issued, so we have that money in the bank. We're paying it back with the sales tax that we get annually. So, you're, since, you know, I don't, I don't have approval to, for anything over $75,000 of city manager, so city council has to approve the expenditure of those dollars.
But if, what I'm saying is, is we already approved it once, when we approved the sales tax, what specifically are we approving here?
The use of the $1.2 of the $12 million for, to go towards this Trax project. The $12 million of 2E funds for-
As long as it's public improvement.
Yeah, yes, yeah, and you can say that in your motion, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Hoppy?
Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you.
Can you put the look-back clause would be possibly in the $1.2 million agreement and the renewal Wheat Ridge agreement?
No.
No, no, I don't have that agreement.
I don't have that.
Okay, all right.
And I don't want to deal with the renewal Wheat Ridge.
Yeah.
I just don't want to have the staff, no, I just don't want to have the staff have to redo it after.
Okay. And then, I have a question, and then perhaps another consensus. For the negotiations with SEH to start the scope of work for preliminary designs for the pedestrian bridge in Linear Park, do those have to be combined? Can they be separated? Okay. They can be separated?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a consensus to enter into negotiations with SEH to complete a scope of work for preliminary designs for the pedestrian bridge. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, what is the number on that? Six to two?
Can I see a count of hands again? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight to zero.
Okay. And what was the count on the other one?
Mr. Matthews, did you have your hand up to, as part of, as part of the consensus or a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we had eight to zero on the prior consensus also. Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Specifically speaking about the look-back provision, the basics are that the look-back mandates a developer to provide the city or its financial advisor with evidence of its annualized cumulative internal rate of return on investment at the specified periods of time after the project completion. And the IRI shall be calculated with equity, revenues, and expenses in accordance with generally accepted accounting provisions. And if the records indicate that developer has received a higher rate of return on equity, a higher return on cost, or a higher internal rate of return than originally proposed to the city at the time of the development agreement, the developer and the city shall split, on a 50-50 basis, the increase above the original projected rates of return. And I'd like to make a consensus that we encourage the Urban Renewal Authority to adopt a similar provision for their agreement with the Trax project.
So, now, this is a consensus to clarify what Ms. Hoppy said with, in more detail with regard to the-
I think this is a separate motion relative to our encouragement. We can't tell the Urban Renewal Authority what to do, but we can encourage them to follow our lead in adding a look-back provision within their agreement with the Trax project.
So, is your consensus relative to both the $1.2 million that this council controls and the, and the urban renewal, or just the urban renewal portion of that?
That consensus was made. The first part of what I read was a general idea of what a look-back clause would look like. And then, so, I would hope that that sticks both with the $1.2 million, and I'm making a consensus to encourage the Urban Renewal Authority to do the same.
Okay, okay. Then, just to make sure, Ms. Hoppy, is that your intention on the look-back provision, that additional detail with respect to the $1.2?
The additional detail was not, it's a separate, well, Mr. Urban was defining what a look-back clause was, and then asked for a separate consensus for us to encourage urban renewal to add it to their clause. So, the two consensuses that I made are still standing as is.
Okay, so this is a consensus that Mr. Urban is requesting with respect to the Urban Renewal Board?
And to make it more or less complicated, I can make a consensus that we accept that definition of a look-back clause in general terms, and allow our city attorney to provide us guidance on whether that would be appropriate or not. So, could we start with that, just to-
I have a question here for Mr. Pond.
Yeah, to that effect, I'm assuming that we would-
Yeah, I'm to that effect, I'm assuming that we would get, that we will get draft language as this develops and have a chance to see it as it comes through.
Yes, of course, yep.
So, so, I mean, I'm not opposed to, I don't know that. I would, I may, we can have a consensus on it. I would probably have to study that more to feel comfortable with it. To me, if that, if you feel strong about it, it can be passed through to the city attorney as an example. I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about it. I like the idea in general, which is where I voted on the previous consensus, so.
It'd be nice to have some flex building because we'll have to negotiate with the developer and and see what the legal.
Right, so I mean, in other words, using it, using it as a framework, but I mean, if we're, if I, I wouldn't do a consensus to have it verbatim because I haven't had a chance to study it.
Just a framework.
It only sounded verbatim because I, I, right, right, verbatim. But I don't expect it to be written down and used as exactly as presented, but the basic concept concepts are that ahead of time, we define what that internal rate of return might be and what, what percentage above that is, you know, is split. What what kind of split are we talking about after they have met their expectations? Because that's what we're trying to get them to is to an expectation that they feel comfortable investing in the city. So let's let them have that, but if it goes gings and busters, I wanted us to get something back on it. So we leave that to the city attorney to consider. Is that okay?
Is that, so on Mr. on Mr. Urban's motion for consensus, how do we feel? Show of hands, that passes eight to zero.
And then the the next one is just the recommendation of the Urban Renewal Authority to consider a similar provision for their agreements with the Trax project.
I thought we had just did it with the, I thought we had just did the urban renewal. Okay.
No, you didn't. Question?
Mr. Pond?
So just a question on that, and this may be another one where I'm not sure I know enough, kind of to to Councilmember Hoppe's point, where if we were recommending this, I don't know enough of what what they may be considering, you know, to to understand why I'm recommending it against some other thing, some other mechanisms that they would have and or desire they would have to do. So because of that, I'm a little apprehensive about voting for the consensus. And not because I don't kind of, you know, again, generally agree with it as 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 we've stated it for the 1.2, but I'm less familiar with with kind of provisions or considerations that they will deliberate on and and I don't want to necessarily put a bind to the, to those conversations. Again, I think those are coming, will end up coming through us in in some way. Am I wrong about that?
Not the URA piece, no, nope, the board, not, not for, there's just property tax.
Because it's just property tax.
If there's sales tax involved, you'd have to come back.
Yeah, again.
I guess from, and Steve, you know, shake me if I'm wrong, but, and I'm not going to speak for the whole committee, but I think the request is just, hey, look at it and consider this option. It's not, I don't think it's saying, you know, do it. So and and based off of, I think the discussions our committee had last week, I think that, you know, I think they'd be open to to hear what council had to say. So I feel comfortable, I don't want to speak for them all, but from the discussions that happened a week ago, I feel that for them to know what what we're asking to consider, not holding them to it, but hey, have you considered something like this? Also talk to our renewal Wheat Ridge attorneys, I think, would not be binding to that committee. Do you feel the same, Steve? Okay.
I'll make a consensus to encourage the Urban Renewal Authority.
And what was that consensus?
To encourage Urban Renewal.
Okay, and that was, once again, eight, eight hands on that or? No, I think we have seven, six, two? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that, does that give?
We still have the pedestrian.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, sorry, the Linear Park hasn't been addressed, which was asked to be addressed.
Ms. Hoppe, if I might interject, I apologize, but it had been staff's intent to get authorization to enter into contract negotiations for preliminary and final design as well as right-of-way acquisition, keeping in mind that that contract would would come in front of council for approval. But we'd like to keep things moving forward, knowing that we've got a clock on the expenditure of the 2E funds. So as it pertains to your first motion, if you'd entertain that amendment at your discretion as well as on the the Linear Park.
Yeah, so I guess my only question then on the Linear Park is, you know, Mr. Pond brought up a really good point that it's been now kind of slimmed down. Do we think this is something where later on down the road we can go and expand on? Or is it something that we should not, that we should wait and then do all at once?
We we had that conversation with our consultant. If we don't do sort of the two-track deal and we go to one-track deals, so we can add the two-track, it'd be very hard to. A lot of the cost in that two-track thing was because of the additional retaining walls that that wider section was going to require. And that was, that was really, it was, it was very similar to what we have now, it was just two pieces. There was a piece for bikes and a piece for beds. Our thought was, as we thought about this further, it's kind of like on Wasworth where we had the two-way cycle track at first. We just, we sort of value engine that out and thought it'd be great to have, but are we really going to have that many bicycles? And as we thought about this more, we think the same thing. I think the park-like nature comes from the fact it's not just a 10-foot concrete path in a void. We're also going to have that landscaping on both sides, up and down the hill on either side of it. And with the pedaling and everything else, I think it's still going to feel, have that much wider park-like feel than just having a 10, I think of the 10-foot path on the east side of Kipling, that's a 10-foot piece of concrete, that's it. This is, this still has a lot more stuff to it on the sides. And we can certainly, you know, look at other things like add some more little plaza areas, make that plaza area bigger. We could do some things like that to try to make it feel more park-like. But it was, it was, our thought was, we just, we don't think we'll have enough bikes to justify having a separate bike facility. We'll probably have people walking on the bike side too, and then it just sort of muddies the water.
Mark, explain a little bit to the difference between the design. Originally, we were looking at two separate paths, but we're going to one path, but it's also a much bigger path, right?
Yeah, I think we had two 8-foot paths before, and now we've got the one 10-foot pass. We certainly, we tried to combine some of that real estate, similar to what we did on the Wasworth project, to try to make it be a wider thing. So certainly, as we move forward with preliminary design, we can look at some of the things to make sure that it still feels like a park and not just a multi-use path.
Mr. Pond?
So it's a parkway?
Yeah, we could.
He's never a park, all right, let's just get it right.
It never was a park.
Pond, a parkway, but. So there may be, okay, fair enough.
Good point, though.
The, what discussion then was had at all about the kind of respite? You know, there's, there's this one quote plaza, you know, portion. And and I think those are, that's interesting, although I only saw one, right? There's one and a stairs, and and so maybe that's a question for whether or not those can be added later. Are we doing, will the acquisition plans allow us? It seems like they will since we'll be, we'll be landscaping both both sides of that for quite a distance. That we might be able to expand a few more pockets if they become successful and and become useful as people, as places for people to get out of the way or or stop.
And I think we could certainly, as we go through the more detail, we're just doing, this is very high-level conceptual design. As we get into detailed design, if we have in areas we're going along that's relatively flat, it'd be really easy to add another little plaza on the, on the west side at this location or the east side here and those kind of things, we can certainly look at that, absolutely. And and our intent is to get the easement basically from the back of the curb at the bottom of the hill to the property line at the top. So it'd be, it'd be that whole hill would would become our easement in our sort of area to take care of and and area to enhance.
And and Mr., just so that I'm clear, the the ability of, for us to get easements instead of purchasing the property is is the way that we've kept the cost down on this?
We're, we're showing that $900,000 I showed in right-of-way cost includes a pretty big chunk to actually acquire this slope. And so if we can go the easement route, again, that gives us that much more money to sort of hold at the end for another project that may come up that we think is a really great thing to participate in or to build ourselves.
Okay, and then we would then, instead of purchasing the property, hopefully have an easement on the property and then and then we as a city would would maintain that as we do our other park property?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you for the additional information. At this time, I'd like to ask for consensus to enter into negotiations with SEH to complete a scope of work for preliminary designs for the Linear Park.
Show of hands on that?
Just to, and to, and final was was the request, so just to.
Again, your discussion, but.
Yeah, is there any, so I think.
We're asking for preliminary, final and right-of-way acquisition.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that part. For both, so for both, right?
Okay. This is the full deal on the, on the Linear Parkway?
Yeah, we can capture, we can capture the bridge.
Okay, we have a consensus of eight to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask, Ms. Hoppe and Mr. Urban, you read off your motions pretty quickly, can you get me the wording of that? You didn't make that up on the fly, you have it written down.
I used the the staff recommendation memo, but I'll, I'll show you the part I have.
I know it's not a, like a motion, official motion where you're, but I think the wording here is important and I'd like to have an accurate record of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Just for housekeeping, I think the request was also just to clarify that we want to go to final on the pedestrian bridge as well. So that was your motion, was for both? Okay, great.
Thank you. Mr. Goff and Mr. Johnstone, does that provide you with the information that you were hoping to get out of Agenda Item Number One?
I believe so, yep.
Then that will conclude us on Agenda Item Number One. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mary Lee, for coming in this evening.
We're going to take about a eight or 10-minute break, if you will. Thank you. Thank you. Come back to, come back to order on our Sweet Ridge City Council study session for April 1st, and we will go on to agenda item number two. Mr. Goff, would you like to, do you have a presentation on this?
No, not really. Just, um, kind of just a discussion. Just as, as a reminder, as you all know, we have a retreat scheduled for the Saturday, April 6th. What?
What, what time is that retreat?
Um, the, the meeting, the retreat starts at 2:00.
It ends at 2:00.
At 9:00. Continental Breakfast, if you want it, it'll be ready at 8:30. So, we're at the Senior Resource Center. Um, you all know where that's at, right? On Chase and 35th, right? Up in that conference room where we, we've held.
32nd.
32nd. And Senior Resource, Seniors Resource Center has a new executive director, and he is going to be, actually be there, and he wants to say hi before we start.
Oh.
So, Zach may know him. So, so he's gonna, he, he was gracious enough to allow us to use his space, so he's going to introduce himself at the beginning, so he'll be there. I'm sorry, I forgot his name. Zach, do you remember?
Chris Lynn.
Thank you. Um, so, we're scheduled from 9:00 to 2:00. If we get done early, we can get out early, so that would be great. In your packet is a tentative agenda, and we're going to work with CZB over the next couple of days to finalize the final agenda by April 4th. So, um, we had some direction and some comments from City Council at the last study session on kind of what you'd want to hear out of the retreat. In your packet, again, the tentative agenda is to address pending city councils, city council questions on the NRS. Make sure you understand the process and the current findings and emerging recommendations that are coming out, and then understanding of potential implications of some of the NRS recommendations, what new approaches to certain city activities for planning projects and resident engagement, personnel needs, budget impacts, and, and so forth. Just, just, I just want to emphasize that this is not a strategic planning retreat. We're going to focus on the NRS. We have a strategic plan, which I think I included in your packet. Our plan is to have an update to that strategic plan at the beginning of next year after November elections. So, we'll, we'll take a look at the vision goals and, and priorities at that time. I'm sure there'll be additional priorities coming out of the NRS potentially, and we'll have to figure out how those get integrated into your current strategic plan. And Janice, and I kind of talked about this item, and, and she encouraged to have a little bit of a discussion on this tonight before Saturday. So, did you want to say anything, Janice?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had, and, and like, even if you were there when we were working on the strategic plan, that you just had it in front of you, so that as we're hearing like the emerging recommendations, we've read this, you know, gone over the strategic plan, we can think to ourselves, oh, you know, that recommendation fits into vision topic two, Wheat Ridge is a community for families, goal two, provide options for seniors to age in place, you know? So, the, I just thought it was important that as we were looking through all the work that they did through the NRS and all the, the data that they have, that we're able to then implement that into our current strategic plan. So, that's just kind of my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Will we have copies of this available on Saturday, or should we print it before we come?
I'll make copies available.
Okay.
Anything else that you would like? Copies available, citizen survey? You can pull some of those up. You all have Wi-Fi there, you can pull it up on your.
Yeah, we can bring our little machines.
Yep. I'll make, oh, we'll have copies of this strategic plan, though.
Do you think we need the comp plan or any other sort of planning documents? Or we've got those all online that we?
They're all online, yeah.
We can refer to those. We can all read them before Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Memorize them?
Mm-hmm.
Well, not necessarily memorize, but it's the table of contents. Some other discussion, Mr. Matthews?
Can I bring my 30-inch screens? If.
Thought you want to watch basketball.
Can I bring two 30-inch screens? I can multitask.
Okay, Mr. Urban?
Mr. Mayor, is the, as far as the public notice for that retreat that is planned for, when was that noticed, or how, when will that be posted?
Um, it'll be noticed in the regular, we have 72-hour notice, so City Clerk's Office will notice that as they would any other meeting and procedures with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Hoppe?
I think maybe we should just kind of discuss real fast, too, about guidelines of when we're doing retreats, and that it's a working session for us, a lot like study session. The citizens are welcome to come and listen. There is no comment, public comment time during a retreat, but they're welcome to come and, and be a part of the audience, listen to the discussions.
Really? It's an open meeting? Very much so. Any further discussion about what we might do on Saturday? Mr. Pond?
Just for clarification, address pending city council questions were questions that had come up over, at the last, at the last presentation, about the plan or some of the elements.
Yeah, and I think that if, if you don't feel like your question got notated, then maybe you need to email that over to Patrick, so that they can make sure that they're addressing that.
Yeah, if you don't have anything this evening, anything additional that you, any goals or any questions or any items that you want to specifically talk about at the retreat, if you think of something before the 4th, which is Thursday, I guess, we're going to try to finalize the actual agenda and flow of the retreat by the 4th. So, get that information sent over to me if you could.
Additional discussion? Okay, do you have all the information you needed to gather on, on item number two?
I do, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. We will conclude item number two and move to staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Um, as you all heard and got my emails, and the train is, is a-comin', they're shooting for a ribbon cutting on April 26th. We will have additional information soon on some other logistics. They may actually do a soft opening of the line before April 26th and, and provide free ridership for a few days. We don't have that information quite yet, but as I mentioned to some of you, I believe they're, they'll still have a, a full three-day celebration. I think I did maybe mention this to you. Thursday night, there'll be a VIP event, and then Friday will be the ribbon cutting at our, at the end of the line station, so at our station. And then Saturday will be a community event opening. And again, RTD is going to be distributing more information in the next few days on more logistics, so we'll get that out, too, soon as we get it.
Mr. Matthews?
Um, are they going to open with or without whistles?
On April 26th, there won't be any whistles. There may be, if they do a soft opening, there still may be some whistles. The quiet zones will be in place when, when it opens.
Is there a set date on that now?
Yep, yep, actually, I.
I thought they had done that today.
Well, actually, I got this certified mail letter in the, in the mail today, notice of date upon which the Gold Line Arvada Quiet Zone will be established, April 19th. The whistles will stop.
Tremendous.
Yes. Doesn't mean, though, there could be a whistle still if there's an emergency, so, but they won't be blowing them.
It does, one other question dawns on me, too, because does that include the, the quiet zones? Does that include all of the intersections in our jurisdiction?
It does.
Okay, all of the crossings. Additional questions or comments? Is that all for your staff report?
Yes.
Or we'll go to elected officials' reports? Anyone have something to offer tonight? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to invite all of you to the STEM Gala. Uh, it's Saturday, May 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00, I believe. It was on the event that Patrick had sent out by email, but the City of Wheat Ridge has a table, and Bud and I were the only ones there to represent the city last year out of 10 people, so I'd really like a better showing this year. And it's also open to the public, so if you can purchase tickets at FASE, F-A-S-E, foundation.org. So, I just invite all of you to join me and also the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, any additional reports from our elected officials? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give an update regarding Senate Bill 008. There was an amendment to that bill, which took out the language for additional LEAD programs, or LEAD programs. Originally said that it would expand from four to 10, and it turned, would turn it into a grant program, but that's now been removed from the bill, but it still contains all the original provisions, except for the funding. Thank you.
Any additional elected officials' matters? Any other, any other business to come before the council? Actually, we're not doing a business meeting, so any, anything else? All right, we will stand adjourned and see everyone here on, at the Senior Resource Center for our retreat, and a full meeting next week.